Call to order, City Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, any changes to the Order of Business?
Yes, President Decker, there's one addition under Administration Reports. We'll add a number three where I will give an update on future legal services.
All right, just the one change, Mr. Gah?
That is correct.
Any questions for Mr. Gah or staff on the change? No, I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
So move.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor of the Order of Business as amended, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The Order of Business is approved. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? If not, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the consent agenda. We do have three items on timetable this evening. We'll move right into the non-time table. And the first item up, Mr. Gah, is the building at 805 Sims.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is, the House formally used as the domestic violet shelter as part of the funding plan for their new one. The city acquired this property. It was built as a very large, single-family dwelling in the early 60s. Needs significant update, but with the right buyer and the right vision could be a good, a very modern, nice property again. So we see no need for it for city use and would recommend selling that. Depending on value, we estimate its current value to be around $150,000 to $200,000 because it does need significant upgrades. With those upgrades, could be worth well over $300,000, but again, that would take quite an investment. In order to generate interest, we'd suggest a starting bid at or below that bottom. We were suggesting maybe $120,000 to $150,000.
Commissioners, any comments or questions for Mr. Gah on this property?
Once you public, publish that, we'd be able to decline any offers.
Well, when you set a minimum bid, that's what you're doing.
I mean, if you get, what, a $130?
It's below the minimum, you know, if it's, if that's below the minimum. But if it's not, then that would be-
The minimum here is $120.
Yeah. And that's where we, if we want to go a little higher, we'd suggest no higher than $150.
Have we had the assessor look at them?
Yes, and when the Building Department looked at it based on what it needed, the assessor looked at it, and that's where we get anywhere from current, current value, $150,000 to $200,000, maybe $160,000. It does need a lot of updating.
Do we want to set the minimum at the low end of the valuation?
Why aren't we just looking to put it on the market with a realtor?
I think this will generate interest and turn it slowly, quickly, and then we don't have to worry about commissions or acquiring a realtor or anything like that. I think we can, we have sold property like this before. Typically, what we do is accept bids and then at the bid opening, give the highest two bidders the opportunity to increase their bid till we, till we get one. So it's a rather effective way to do it.
Well, Mr. President, I've been in that house and it's, you know, obviously, it's been through a lot over the years, but it's structurally very beautiful. And I think that for anyone who's interested in, you know, looking for a flip, this is certainly a worthy project. I don't think, I don't think that there will be a lot of people that wouldn't give $150 for it personally.
Any other comments? So it seems like if we stay at the low end, the $150 at a minimum, that'd be-
Would you pull up for me? That's what I said.
It's not, it's exempt, so. If you have any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld, he is in the, in the back, so you won't ask him anything. But I kind of get the feeling that everyone thinks we should be maybe at the low end of his valuation at $150. See what it generates?
Good place to start.
Okay.
I would make that motion, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion to put the minimum bid offer at $150.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, questions for anyone on the staff on this property? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Gah, we have the Event Center RFP.
At the last Commission meeting, you approved Convention, Sports and Leisure to conduct the feasibility study. You have their engagement agreement in your packet. Just a couple of things to note, that is, staff was reviewing this. There were a couple of tasks that are supposed to be in Phase One moved to Phase Two somewhat inadvertently. We have talked to them, so Phase One will be all Task 1 through 8, and that is the cost of $34,500. Even though you'll be approving the agreement that says Phase 2 will cost $15,000, we're locking in the price, we're not locking in the commitment. So the idea is to see the work in Phase 1 and decide if and when the Commission wants to move forward with Phase 2 after seeing that initial Phase 1 report. So it's the staff recommendation to approve the contract as presented. There are, I need to add, there are a couple of changes being made that were brought up by the Attorney. Those will be made as well as the task, and then that's the agreement as it stands. And again, we will only at this point be committing to Phase 1 even though the entire agreement will be approved.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
So, Mr. Gah, the first phase will be $34,500, right?
Correct.
And what is the estimated cost of Phase 2? I did not realize that we wouldn't see any preliminary construction costs in Phase 1.
That's, that is Phase 2, and that will be $15,000, so it will bring us to $49,500 total, and it was budgeted at $50,000. So that will keep us within the, in the budget. And really, it's just to get the nod when we look at it, because Phase 1 will say, hey, you have the market to do it or you don't. If we don't have the market, of course, we wouldn't do construction costs. But if everything looks good, we will likely be willing to move into Phase 2 fairly soon.
And you said, Mr. Gah, that this will be amended to include Task 7 and 8?
Will be in Phase 1, that is correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Gah on this contract? Hearing no other questions, I'd look for a motion on the contract with CSL.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the contract with CSL.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Gah or staff?
Did they give us a timeframe when we'd have Phase 1?
I would imagine they'd start it within the next two to three weeks, and they anticipate 10 weeks to complete it.
We should have something-
September, around the 1st of September, middle.
And, Mr. Gah, they, they do provide an interim update as well, don't they? I believe, but I know one of the companies did.
Yeah, that was kind of the Phase 1 is kind of the interim, is to get it done, get that initial phase done quickly, and then give that report before Phase 2. I'd have to go back and look if there's really much in that 10 weeks, but we could ask for something, and I'm sure they'll provide it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gah? Now, we have a motion to approve with a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
No.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have Mrs. Nomenek. For the Hiring Journal.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners.
Good evening.
First up on our list, we have a police officer position. We have a couple openings still, a couple people in the background phase, and we've just opened the position again today to start advertising for that. Animal control supervisor position has been filled. We have a communications specialist position that had just been posted, and that will close July 3rd, so we're taking applications for that. Design engineer, we've had open for quite a while. We did get one applicant, and I believe we are working on getting an interview set up when we have everyone available to do those interviews, or that interview. Operations manager, we will have open, have open and taking applications until July 1st. Street maintenance operator, we have three openings right now for that position, and interviews will take place tomorrow, or, I'm sorry, on Thursday for that. We had a fleet shop technician position that has been filled, and that person is working for us. Solid waste landfill operator was filled, and so that, there is no longer any openings in the landfill. The collections route operator, we've had several positions open, and then some filled, and then open again, but it looks like we're getting pretty close to getting those filled in the interview process right now for that position. Scale attendant, kind of the same thing. We had hired some seasonal or weekend people to fill that position, and we had it filled pretty quick, and then some of them took full-time jobs, and so had a couple more openings or having to refill a couple of those. And actually, one of our seasonal employees took the full-time scale service representative position, so that opened up another part-time position. So the, the full-time position is filled. We have a property appraiser position open for a little while that has been filled internally, so then we'll have a property appraiser technician that's being opened today. We had a limited hour library assistant opening in the Midora Library, and interviews were done on that. Offers were made today, so we'll be in the background phase for that. We made two part-time offers to fill that one full-time. It's a limited hour just for the summer position. GIS intern or engineering intern, we've not been able to get any applicants for that, so we still have that open. The seasonal museum, it's like a scanner-type position, we did fill that. And then seasonal water utilities, we still have one seasonal opening for the water department. Water utility operator, we have one opening. Interviews were done today for that position. Seasonal museum worker, it looks like both of those openings have been filled. However, we do have a museum weekend attendant. We're looking for someone just to work Saturdays and Sundays during the summer, and then just Saturdays during the winter, and haven't had a lot of luck getting a lot of applicants for that position. Facility operator, we were able to fill that with one of our seasonal facility operators, so the full-time position has been filled. And then we had a facility maintenance, a chief facility maintenance operator opening, and we opened that internally, and that has been filled. And then we had one, we have one seasonal buildings and sites position left to fill. Deputy clerk of court, we have a part-time position open, and we just did interviews on that just the other day, so still waiting on that one. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the hiring? It seems like applications are up.
It's certain departments, it is kind of, it is kind of looking that way. One that I forgot to mention, I guess, was the admin assistant. I didn't see that on here. For Public Works, the interviews are today and tomorrow on that, and it started out pretty slow, but ended up getting quite a few applicants after all for it. So, yeah, I think they are starting to move up a little bit more.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gah, we have a thank you note?
Yes, this is in relation to the senior citizen grants. I'll read this one. "Thank you for your generous donation to help our senior center here in Richardson. Sincerely, Tom and Judy Rol and the Richardson community."
So it was nice to hear back from the communities that we are, you know, fulfilling their grant needs, so that's nice to hear from them. And you have item number three, legal services.
Yes, I just wanted to give you a little update. Mrs. Murtha has submitted her resignation as our city attorney. Her last day will be Friday, this Friday, the 21st. We have RFPs out, requests for proposals for either single practice or firms wishing to serve and give our general legal services for the city. Those are due Friday, and I anticipate a few of those coming in, reviewing those. As I suggested earlier, this is really, as it's an RFP, it'll be a Commission decision, so perhaps to keep it moving along, you may want to have a special meeting sometime next week to look at them, and hopefully be able to do some reviews and maybe make a decision at the first or second meeting in, in July. And so with that, this is Jan's last meeting, but I have asked her if she'd help us in the interim. She's done a lot of great stuff, and quite frankly, she's leaving things on our plate for us to do, and having someone in the interim would help, so she's the best candidate to, to keep it, keep it going. So she has submitted a proposal to serve at an hourly rate in the interim, and like I said, I don't anticipate we're going to see a lot of new stuff in the next three weeks or so, but in case we do, we want a talented attorney, and we've had one, and I'm going to miss her, I know the staff is too. She has tightened up the reins on a lot of things that you've noticed as far as agreements and, and our due diligence ahead of time of bringing things to the Commission, and we hope to, to keep doing that. So I thank her for her service, and I know we're all going to miss her.
Well, thank you, Jan. And I think that's a good idea to retain you on an hourly basis, so, until we make a final decision, and then maybe even some after that. So we always have the legislation part, portion of it when, when the legislators are in session. I know you've been invaluable when it comes to that, so, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I'm out of town Wednesday through Friday, so we want to meet through those three Monday or Tuesday. Or I can-
Okay. And I think if there's, if we can get three together, I think that-
I'm actually gone till Wednesday. I leave Friday till Wednesday.
Mr. Steiner, you're at the lake. A ticket?
I'll make it.
If we do Wednesday morning-
Wednesday morning?
I have to fly out, but if anything, I can-
What time you have to fly by?
Um, I think I need to leave here by 3:00.
So if we have an 8 o'clock Wednesday morning?
What date is that? Next one?
Next one.
The 26th. Yeah.
Are you back?
Jason?
I'm just looking here and see when I-
Nikki?
Looking at the calendar. I don't, yeah, I don't get in till 4:50 on the 26th.
Well, we can have, we can get three, three of us here. Four would be nice, but. Ms. Walla?
Wednesday through-
8 o'clock? All right.
I can, I could call in Wednesday.
Okay, we'll do that. Wednesday, 8 o'clock.
All right.
And then also, before Mr. Gah's recommendation to retain Mrs. Murtha on an hourly basis in the interim, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would make that motion to approve the agreement.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Gah's recommendation, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Not sure if we actually accepted her resignation, did we?
But we, I, I know I would really like to thank you for all you've done for the city. I know it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Agreed.
So we will move on now from Administration into Engineering, and the first item up is a task order, and Assistant City Engineer Marshick, you'll be presenting a task order.
Yes, President Decker, Commissioners, this first task order is a storm water ordinance revision. We have a task order from Apex to help us rewrite our storm water ordinance and to develop a standards manual to go along with that. The task order is set at a not-to-exceed agreement in the amount of $74,674, and the engineering staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this ordinance revision?
Did we, did we budget this?
Yes.
We did?
It was in our, in our budget.
Do you remember when the last time we revised this ordinance?
It's been quite a while. I'm not sure what the date was.
Last time we redid the task for storm water?
Oh, when was the last time?
Yeah, I think it was before my time-
Yeah.
It's been eight years.
Yeah. It's due. It's due. We've added a lot of infrastructures inside.
Any other questions for Mrs. Marshick on this task order number four? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Apex Engineering Task Order Number 4 in the amount of $74,674 with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is a task order, Apex Engineering, and this is for the storm water pond on Maryland's Way. Mrs. Marshick?
This item is an amendment to our task order one that we have with Apex, and this is for work associated with the Maryland Way storm water pond improvements. This allows Apex to provide us some additional services that come up, and it is set at an hourly rate. That's not something that we usually work through with them, but based on the litigation that we've had with this project, it helps us track those hours to share with those that are involved in this project outside the city, and that's why we had set it up that way. Engineering staff is recommending approval of this amendment to task order one.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick or staff on this task order?
Mr. President, is this the storm water pond that's located just east of the Public Safety Center?
Correct. A little bit north, but yeah, that facility.
In that area. And what, do we have a status update on that?
Jan, can you help with that question, please?
Mr. Trustum, members of the Commission, what has happened is the, under pursuant to the terms of the settlement agreement, Apex was to prepare plans for the storm water pond. Those plans were prepared by Apex and shared with all of the parties. The city and Cooks were to split the cost of the plan preparation. The city has no financial responsibility for any of the improvements associated with the pond. However, once the plans were shared with the prior plaintiffs, they had several questions about the plans, which then came back to, I believe it was at least 30 questions-
Correct.
Written questions. Those were conveyed back to Apex to answer, and they spent a substantial amount of time preparing those answers for us to provide back to the plaintiffs. And so, and those type of hours were not anticipated under the original task order, so that's the reason for this amendment, is to compensate Apex for those additional unanticipated time that they've spent. And those answers were conveyed back to all of the parties. I have not heard anything since, and it's been a few weeks. I anticipate that it's quite likely there will be more questions.
So who's responsible for the improvements then? Cook?
And we're splitting the, the hourly cost, these extra hours between Cook and ourselves?
We are going to request that Cook pay for that because it was under the scope of the original settlement agreement.
Is the $20,000 a not-to-exceed? No. Okay, it's an hourly.
Okay, that was original.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Marshick or Mrs. Murtha? We also have a representative from Apex in the audience. If you have any questions for them.
Mr. President, move, we approve task order.
We have a motion to approve Apex Engineering Amendment 1 to Task Order Number 1.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion on this task order amendment? No, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a couple minutes. Mr. Zurov, we have a reuse booster station generator bid.
Yes. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Bids were received for the reuse booster station generator on Friday, May 10th. There were two contract bids with the lower responsible bidder being John's Refrigeration and Electric for $339,810. The engineer's estimate was $246,800. We determined that the cost of the metal in the enclosure was what had increased the bid prices on both, both of the bidders, and we, once the, if the bid is approved, and once we get under contract, we're going to look at those enclosures and determine if we do want to continue with that enclosure. And that was the increasing bid for, for both bidders. So, a preview by Apex Engineering, they recommend the city of Dickinson approve John's Refrigerating Electric bid of $339,810, and Public Works staff recommends approval. I'll answer questions on that.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this bid?
What's the, explain the difference in the enclosure.
With, with generators, you can get them with different types of enclosures. We included the full enclosure, it's, you know, it's completely enclosed with the, you know, thicker metal and, and sound attenuation. And with, talking to the bidders, that was the increasing cost from the generator dealer themselves. And I think we can go with what's called like more of a skin enclosure and get closer to the budgeted price, but we can't negotiate that until we- But we can't negotiate that until we, uh, get under contract with the low bidder.
So that enclosure is like eighty-five thousand dollars?
That's my understanding.
And there was a huge discrepancy between the two bids, and the other one's almost ninety thousand off, the lowest bid.
Right.
Wow, okay.
We would like to continue with this project, uh, you know, as the generator, and I think we can, uh, get closer to the budgeted amount.
Is this enclosure you spec something we've done on other ones that we have around town?
Most of the generators we have, the bigger, are all, all have enclosures. This is one of the smaller generators we have.
Any other questions for Mr. Zurov? Or, like I said, we have a, we have a member of Apex's team in the audience, if you have any questions for them.
Mr. President, move, we approve low bid?
Second.
I have a motion to approve Apex Engineering's bid recommendation of a reused booster station generator to John's Refrigeration and Electric for three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight ten. And Mr. Zurov says that he's going to work to. We will. To lower that. We will.
Yeah, I'd like to just make sure we try to negotiate that closer to what we had figured, but.
Any other questions, comments for Mrs. Zurov or the representative from Apex? If I'm correct, Mr. Steiner, you made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Trustam, you seconded it.
Okay.
So, go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a five o'clock timetable, and that item, the first one up, is a public hearing of Chapter Thirty-two Amendment on Retirement for the City.
Mr. President, members of the commission, this would be proposed ordinance sixteen seventy-six, and it comes to as a recommendation from the retirement committee to amend the closed defined benefit city and police pension plans. And so just a, a really brief history, uh, the city previously had its own divine, defined benefit plans, and those closed in two thousand and six to new employees. After two thousand and six, what you had was a defined contribution plan that existed up until recently, uh, when the city decided to join the Indy-Purse Plan, and that defined contribution plan was then closed to new employees, and employees were given the option to join the Indy-Purse Retirement Plan. You have active employees working for the city in all three of these plans, the Closed DB, the Closed DC, and now the Indy-Purse Plan. What became apparent is that, uh, the, in reviewing these ordinances, is that the language regarding closure lacked clarity. And there was uncertainty about what would happen if somebody, uh, an employee of the city who isn't, who was an active participant of the closed defined benefit plan retired, but then later on was rehired as an employee of the city. Would they go back into the closed defined benefit plan, or would they go into a new plan? Be it either the defined contribution plan when it was still open, or the Indy-Purse Plan now? Uh, and so these issues were brought before, uh, the, uh, retirement committee because under, um, under the IRS rules which regulate retirement plans, uh, that technically governmental entities are not subject to ERISA. We use it as a guiding, uh, a guiding tool, uh, but you have the ability and discretion to have a lot of, of flexibility with how you structure your plans. And so you could have structured it one of two ways, uh, one way being close, allowing, uh, those individuals who are re-employed to go back into the closed plan, or say no, uh, they are separated as of this date and, uh, moving on. And the retirement, uh, committee, um, response was, well, we had always, um, assumed that it would be closed upon reemployment, and that's how we want to structure it. And so that's what's presented to you today. Uh, the provisions in both the police defined benefit plan and the city plan, uh, were very similar, and you'll see the language in both. Another clarification that was included in these revisions, uh, was that, uh, Dickinson Park District employees used to participate in the closed defined benefit plan, and that wasn't clear in that language either. And so it is clear now, uh, that when there were, there are still active, uh, employees of Dickinson Park District to participate in this closed defined benefit plan. And so those clarifications were made. As you can see, the, uh, the separation is now, if you're off, if you're off payroll for a month, at that point, you will be considered separated from employment. But if you were to end employment in one position on a Friday and come back Monday in a different one, you will, you will not be considered to have separated from employment. Uh, previously, you have contracted with, uh, Deloitte, uh, as a consultant to provide you with these plan amendments. Um, and in effort for cost saving, I actually drafted these amendments and then sent them over to Deloitte to review. So they didn't, uh, they didn't have those, um, that you didn't incur the cost of having them prepare the amendments, just the cost of their review to make sure that they were consistent with the IRS regulations. And I did actually receive a response this morning indicating that they had, they did not have any concerns or recommended any changes. So, um, this, this, unless you would like to make changes, should be fine for the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions on ordinance sixteen seventy-six? This is dealing with our defined benefit retirement plan. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open up the mic to the public. If anyone has any concerns, comments on ordinance sixteen seventy-six, which is an amendment to Chapter Thirty-two, our retirement plan, please come forward, state your name and your concerns or comments. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments on this amendment? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of, uh, Chapter Thirty-two Amendment, ordinance sixteen seventy-six.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to our second, uh, amendment to our Chapter Twenty-one Tobacco Ordinance. And this, again, is a public hearing. This will be ordinance sixteen seventy-seven. Mrs. Murtha?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This, uh, to give you a little background on this ordinance, this, the proposed changes reflect a policy shift, um, if you would approve them. And by policy shift, uh, overall, um, as you may see as we go through it, a shift from it's not that big a deal to it is a big deal. And that's essentially the, the shift we're looking at. Um, members of the Southwest District Health Unit approached, uh, approached city staff, uh, in twenty eighteen to start discussions about, um, concerns they had with the present ordinance and ways to update it. And the concerns were a result of, uh, several things. One, their process had changed. Uh, previously, they had administered a training themselves to tobacco retailers. Now that training was, uh, not provided through them, but it was in fact a video training, uh, that was, I believe, provided by the FDA, and I would have to confirm that, I'm just going off of my memory here, uh, but they didn't track that video training. So they, they couldn't say whether a retailer, uh, was performing or not, and that type of training is specifically referenced in your ordinance. They were also looking at, um, the penalties which allowed, um, retailers who have gone through the training to not have to pay a fine or receive a penalty if they did ultimately had, have a violation or found to be in violation of the tobacco ordinance, which, um, and again, they presented, it seems a bit counterintuitive. So you go through the training about not selling to minors, and then, um, you sell to minors, but because you went to the training, you don't receive a penalty. Uh, they were also very much concerned about what they, uh, what they were seeing as an increase in minors consuming tobacco products, uh, in the schools. And this would be a direct result of the increase in vaping, uh, and available of vaping products. And I, I'm sure many of you have seen the articles in, uh, the Dickinson Press within the last, uh, month or so. There was one article on June fourteenth, I believe, and, and, and I checked, and it looks like there was another one just posted today, uh, about, and it provides a background about, uh, what school officials are seeing, and that is an increase in use, again, of the, of the, of the vaping by minors, and, and they're bringing forward these concerns. So we met several times and had, uh, uh, quite a few discussions about ways that the Dickinson City ordinance could be revised to, uh, address these concerns and, uh, focus on what are we, what are we really doing to enforce and curb tobacco use, use by youth? And so that is, is the impetus behind the, um, the suggestions, uh, being made in this, uh, ordinance. If you, um, now, these are, again, being brought to you, uh, out of a discussion out of this Southwest District Health Unit, um, and represent a policy shift. So if there are provisions, uh, that you, um, are not amenable to, uh, because it is policy, um, that can be revised between the first and second reading. So to briefly go, go over it, uh, section one, um, this was to clarify that both a retailer and the clerk that actually sold the tobacco product could be cited. Many other jurisdictions do this, um, as opposed to just citing the tobacco licensee or retailer, as opposed to also being able to cite the clerk. Uh, the, the second, um, the second revision, uh, is to address the issue of the, uh, making, making the penalties consistent. So you essentially have two ordinances in Article Twenty-one and Article Twenty-five that had very similar provisions and are addressing the same conduct. That is what are the penalties for violations for selling to minors, uh, or for, for minors, and these were inconsistent. So it was necessary to make them, uh, make them consistent so there was no confusion. And, uh, so you'll see with the second, uh, first, second, and third offense, the, um, the penalties, uh, between these two articles were updated, uh, to reflect, again, consistency, a, a, up to a one-day suspension, uh, for a first offense, a three-day for a second, and a, uh, a five-day or revocation for a third, and making the fines consistent as well. Uh, the, section three, um, this was a due process clarification. So the, the language in there was, was fairly, you know, unclear about what is an informal resolution? What is a formal resolution? How should it be handled? Um, in order to just clarify this for everyone, the, uh, the, this language was amended and added to indicate that if there is a violation by a retailer, it will be set up, and because their license, um, there could be a suspension of license, uh, in order to ensure the due process was carried through on, on behalf of the licensee. Before the suspension would take effect, a hearing would be scheduled before the commission. Uh, if they want to come in, admit, um, or take responsibility for the violation, they can do that, not have a hearing before the commission, pay the fine and receive the suspension. If they want to have a hearing before the commission, then it would be sort of a mini, a mini trial before you. So evidence would be presented by the administrator, and which was already in your code. I will say the formal hearing was already in your code. Uh, so, so that was, um, uh, that was there. Um, and it would be, just the, the timelines were also spelled out because there are times where our code is, uh, has not provided the specific timelines for providing notice, and that results in confusion. So the timelines were given. The next section, uh, is the section which deals with possession, possession, purchase, or use of tobacco products by minors. Uh, and this would be reflecting, again, one of those changes that was, um, a policy shift of, it's not that big a deal. Uh, and I, and I say that because i- if you look at the language which is being overstruck, it was essentially if there is a first violation of, uh, possession of tobacco by a minor, they could come in, pay the fine, and not have to come to court. Uh, it, which is essentially, well, okay, you have tobacco, but, you know, pay some money and then everything's fine. Um, this, uh, and again, looking at, uh, the concerns of the schools and the district health unit, um, was, it, it is imperative to, um, address these issues with, um, with minors right away in the, uh, right away when there is an offense. And so what, um, what the change in penalty was, was, it didn't involve a change in the fine at all, but the addition of having to participate in a tobacco cessation program, which is free. Uh, it is either provided through the Southwest District Health Unit, or, for example, I'm gonna blink on the name now, Sun, Sunrise Youth Bureau. Um, that you can participate in that. Uh, the next section, we, section five, was again making the penalties, uh, making the penalty somewhat consistent. But this, um, this section was actually modeled, modeled after an ordinance by Valley City. There are many, um, political subdivisions throughout the nation that are addressing flavors of vaping. And the reason why, there is a little bit of background to this, um, that, for example, in around two thousand, Big Tobacco, uh, entered into what is referred to as the Master Settlement Agreement. And under, and it was a result of litigation initiated by many states against the larger tobacco companies, uh, saying that we're incurring, the states were incurring extra healthcare costs because of the effects of smoking. And what came out of the Master Settlement Agreement, or, or the negotiation to resolve this litigation, was, um, agreements between Big Tobacco and these states, I say big, big tobacco companies, the, the signers on, uh, to the agreement, which was they were going to agree to, one, pay penalties every year, but also to stop targeting youth. And when they spelled out in the agreement how they were gonna stop targeting youth, they were going to voluntarily agree to start, stop marketing flavors. Because flavors such as bubblegum, cherry, these type of things were more appealing to youth. And so they voluntarily agreed to not do that anymore. And, uh, tobacco companies that didn't, the smaller ones that didn't sign on to the agreement, what, they didn't agree to not target youth, but they were then taxed by states. And states had to agree to pass a specific statute, uh, that would, uh, impose an additional tax upon any company that hadn't signed on to the Master Settlement Agreement. So there is some precedence for this, uh, and also, uh, the, some background research which indicates, yes, these flavors are far more appealing to youth. They do target youth. Youth are more likely to consume, um, to consume, consume products containing nicotine, uh, if they come in, you know, easy-to-use flavors that are, are, for example, bubblegum, cherry, very, very fruity. And so, uh, many, again, many political subs were starting to ban, um, you know, matching their, their legislation to be similar, or matching their ordinance to be similar to the Master Settlement Agreement, and to, um, prohibit these flavors. And another thing that's referenced in the article, um, and which was unknown to me before I was speaking to the, um, the, the individuals from the health unit, is that, uh, these flavors can be mixed your own. So the retailers, uh, can, uh, actually create the flavors, uh, themselves on premises. Uh, so you're never quite sure how much nicotine is in these vaping, um, units. Uh, and that is difficult to regulate. So, anyway, that's where the, this language comes from, and that's what it's intending to address. Uh, the, again, section six is the penalty section, making it consistent?
Yep. So this would, um, so we currently have businesses in Dickinson that are offering these kind of e-cigarettes?
Yes.
Okay, so if we, this ordinance were to pass, um, in the second reading, then they would have to get rid of them?
It would, absolutely, it would impact, um, what they're, the products that they're selling. Which is, again, why it's a, very much a policy decision on your part.
Are we notifying those that we know that are selling that product of this ordinance change?
Do they know that this ordinance is being talked about?
Beyond the fact that it has been published, um, is out there, no. So if it goes past the first reading and you include this provision, I would make a recommendation similar to the recommendation I, uh, made when you were reviewing the Mobile Home Park and Campground Ordinance, which would be to send a letter to your tobacco retailers notifying that this, notifying of this ordinance change.
I can tell you right now, I'm gonna have a hard time voting for this tonight, even at a first reading, so.
And you're free to, again, because it is policy, you're free to say, we would like to see this for a second rea- and pass it as a first reading with amendments, so that you could, uh, amend out the, the items that you're, would not like to see in the second reading.
Mrs. Murtha, are we limited by law where we can find?
Where you can find? Not against. Not against the licensees, no. I would have to check against the minors, but not against the licensees.
I think ultimately what it comes down to is, we don't want them selling to minors. So if they're caught, we need to make it painful. That's the way I look at it. I mean, we have $100 fine, a $250 fine, and a $500 fine. What really hits them in the checkbook is when their business is closed. But I think if you make the penalty large enough to that business owner, they will make sure that their clerks are not, I would hope they would make sure.
And I would agree with you that the license suspension is probably financially more of a burden than the penalty.
But you can continue, and then we'll open up to the public, and then we'll have further discussion. So if you want to continue with the Section 6?
Section 6, again, is just, you can see in this section, it was out of Article 25, and there was a discrepancy between this and Article 21 for the penalties, and this is making it consistent. For example, the second offense had a lower fine, but a higher number of days of suspension. So the suspension for a second offense was seven days, not three days. And the offense for a third violation within two years was revocation, not suspension. So it started out smaller, but escalated quicker. And again, this is just proposed, so you could say, well, we want it to be consistent, but we like the original 25, and we want that to be changed in 21. And that concludes my summary of the ordinance.
Okay, well, I'll open up the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion after the public hearing. So if there's anybody from the public has anything to say about our amendment to Chapter 21, which is ordinance 1677, please come forward, state your name with your concerns or comments on our amendment.
Hello, President and Commissioners. My name is Angie Eckleberger. I'm a property owner here. I just have one quick clarification question on the penalties for the minors. If this passes, will the youth have a misdemeanor record because of tobacco use?
The, no. You'll believe, I mean, youth records are confidential.
But it will be on a record at some point, so if there's other violations or things that they get in, this is going to now count towards, just tobacco use is going to count towards when they go into court again?
The proposed changes don't change the penalty or how it's classified.
Okay.
It changes whether or not they can come in and pay the fine and then have to show up for court. There was never an avenue for the...
So currently, there's still, like, court proceedings for youth tobacco use?
If they come in and pay the fine before the court appearance, it's still counted as a conviction.
Okay, so that's currently, that's not something that's changing?
No, it's not something that's changing.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
President Decker and Commissioners, Jennifer Schaefer with the Southwestern District Health Unit and Tobacco Prevention Coordinator there. And so we brought a packet for you all to look at with many resources in it that have a wealth of information in them, and the reasons that we would encourage you to look at amending and updating the tobacco ordinance for Dickinson. And these are guidelines that are put forth by the Centers for Disease Control. They are FDA's recommendations. Our goal is to, of course, prevent youth access to tobacco products in young adults. We, you know, curbing marketing, like Attorney Jan mentioned, that are aimed at youth, and of course, educating teens on the dangers of using any tobacco product, including e-cigarettes and vaping. And that's why we put these in your packets. It has become, as you can see and have heard about and saw the articles, it has become an epidemic among, you know, youth nationwide, and including our community here in Dickinson, as well as other communities in our counties that the health unit works with. And so much so that they're calling it a 78% increase in use among high school students and a 48% increase among our middle school students, which is very alarming. And the flavors are, we're encouraging that as well with the restrictions due to the fact that youth do tell us that they probably wouldn't be using vaping products if there weren't appealing flavors like the bubblegum and the juicy fruit and cherry and many flavors that we'd be here all night naming. They're not, they do not taste like tobacco products or smell like we're used to having tobacco products smell. And so that's part of the reason why that's in there. And of course, our school resource officers can talk to the fact, too, of minors being caught daily with products that are vaping products, e-cigarettes, liquid nicotine. And we know that young students' minds and their brains are still developing till they're 25, and we've got children that are, like I say, as young as middle school and younger, that are starting to use these products. So that is a concern for us. I welcome any questions, but I just wanted to briefly mention that.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer?
Ms. Schaefer, first of all, thank you. I know you guys are very strong advocates and do a lot of work in the community, and I know we all appreciate that. The last thing we want to see is any child or teenager having access to tobacco products. Did you lobby this at the state level, these same kind of changes in law that you're requesting here for ordinance?
There were bills brought forth to the legislators.
And how were those received?
Currently, it is in a study. And I know that Heather Austin is here as well, she could speak more to that, but that was, yeah, this was brought to the legislature.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward, state your name?
President Decker, members of the commission, my name is Heather Austin, and I am the Executive Director for Tobacco-Free North Dakota. We are a statewide nonprofit agency that works alongside all 28 local public health units across North Dakota, and we provide a lot of educational and advocacy support. And so I'm just here today, if you have any further questions, the question about the legislature was brought up, and I can address that. There were multiple bills this past session, so many, in fact, that they did turn one of them into a study to look at what the best policy decisions and tactics would be to start stemming this epidemic for our youth. And that did just get approved at the end of May here and placed in the Tax and Finance Committee going forward. And so they'll be taking that up over the interim through the next 12 to 18 months. They'll be looking at policy. Having said that, I would encourage you as a city to, you know, be the early leaders on an issue such as this. You know, they've referenced a policy out in Valley City that can be emulated, which is great, and we do know that the flavors are really what's attracting youth, and it's one of the promising practices in preventing youth initiation to tobacco products that the CDC does recommend. And it's not just the cherry and bubblegum. I mean, they're so creative, there are actually over 15,500 flavors on the market now for e-cigarette vaping and Juul products. And our kids are getting their hands on Captain Crunch, Fruit Loops, Unicorn Barf, Tootie Fruity, Dr. Pepper. I mean, those aren't things that are being made for adult users, in my personal opinion. And so taking a look at that alongside of the issue that was brought forth of the mix your own, there are no regulations right now on what can be put in those e-liquids. And a presentation that I do, an example that I give, is that if I want to open my own vape shop, I can. If I want to mix my own flavors on site, I can. I can put whatever flavors, chemicals, nicotine content in that e-juice that I want. And at the end, if I want to turn it blue, and I'm out of blue food coloring, I can dump a bottle of Windex in there. And that's legal. And there's nobody checking on me, there's nobody penalizing me, even if they do find out what I've done, there's no recourse for that. And so having some policies in place that would either limit the opportunities for those flavors to reach our kids, or start regulating and monitoring how those flavors are being produced, I think would be very prudent and can only help our youth avoid a lifelong addiction to these dangerous nicotine products. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, Ms. Murtha, do we have anything in this ordinance that addresses the mixing on site?
No, and I, at this point, am not confident that the city would be able to do that because it would be an FDA preemption issue. You can regulate what's sold, not necessarily the content. And I did want to offer just one point of clarification, and I apologize, there's just a lot in here, just to clarify, non-spoken offenses by minors are non-criminal offenses.
Thank you. And yes, she is correct, you can regulate and make policy around what's being sold, but not how it's being created or how it's being made. So you could, in fact, do a policy saying that you can't sell mixed-your-own products, but you can't dictate how they mix their products.
Any other questions for Mrs. Austin?
Thank you very much for your time today.
Your tobacco cessation program, I mean, it still uses the word tobacco, right? And this product has moved beyond that.
Well, all the nicotine that's in these products is derived from tobacco plants. I mean, you can synthesize it or get it from eggplants, but it's not cost-effective or widely used.
But do you see where there's a disconnect?
I do, and that's what's so concerning for our kids, they're not equating these products as being the exact same as cigarettes.
So has your program morphed into that, where they're going to, now we're going to say, hey, you got to go to the cessation program, we're not giving you the option? Has your program moved into that arena where, okay, you're here because you're vaping, you're not, you don't have a pack of cigarettes?
Correct. Yes, and I understand your question now. And as a nonprofit agency, I don't administer a program myself. I refer everyone to our statewide ND Quits program, and they do currently already counsel and provide nicotine replacement therapies for people wanting to quit vaping. They're addressing all nicotine as being the same, and so whether you're using cigarettes, chewing tobacco, e-cigarettes, vaping, Juul, any of that, it's all considered nicotine products. And you can get free counseling sessions and free nicotine replacement therapies through ND Quits or through your local public health units across the state. And so they do treat it all the same. In fact, the Department of Health did just come out with a position statement this last winter addressing that very comment, and you could get that online through ND.gov and just go Health Department Tobacco Position Statement for e-cigarettes, and it'll pop up for you, and you can see what they've done to clarify that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time and your consideration, appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public? Public hearing is still open, please come forward, state your name. Seeing no one else from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I believe there's a lot of stuff we need to look into. I'm not even close to comfortable to even approving the first reading on this tonight until we have had some chance to at least notify the tobacco people, maybe get together with everybody, sit down, have some discussions. I mean, this is a huge policy change that I would vote no right now if it comes to a vote, so.
Any other comments?
I would be okay with approving the first reading of this ordinance and then allowing that to go forward for the second reading and approval.
I just think there's so much stuff that we haven't even talked about, haven't researched...
We don't have to have the second reading at the next meeting, we can table it for a couple of months if we want. At least this would put them on notice, this would give them something to look at and then make changes to this if they feel, or if we feel need to changes, I guess.
My biggest concern is the fines. I think we should up the fines. And not so much the actual days that they're closed, but the actual fine itself, because that will impact.
And then, Mr. President, how will this be enforced? I know, you know, we had some, a lot of police department time taken to do stings. Are we back in the realm? And Chief Dawson here, I don't know if you want to address this, but what is the commitment to enforce these ordinances? Because I don't know how else you're enforcing them unless you're doing a sting operation, which tied a lot of, I know there was grant funding for that previously, I don't know if that's still the case. As Commissioner Frig, lots of questions in here.
Good evening. I do agree with Commissioner Frig that we do have a lot of questions, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this ordinance. Anything we can do, though, that can deter the use of e-cigarettes or vaping, the police department is solely behind, obviously we'd have to use compliance checks and other methods for enforcement with this.
How many compliance checks are we doing now?
You know, I don't, not the exact number a year, you know, we also do the alcohol ones, we do the tobacco ones. It's not something that we do on a routine basis, it's something that we do in conjunction with the health unit.
And is there still grant funding available to provide these compliance checks?
Correct, there is, yes.
And I, my second concern is the flavors. I understand that's what they're targeting, but I also understand that it's, it's tough to say to somebody that's 25 and 26, is a grown adult, and they say, this is what they want as a flavor, and we're going to shut this whole market down because of, you know, an 18 and, or younger, or 17 and younger, that's their major market, what they're going after. Now, maybe if we can write something in where we say there's no, we're not going to allow them to sell the mixed-on-site stuff, you know, that it can only be, you know, shipped in, I don't know. But it makes it so much tougher for you guys to regulate.
That would be difficult for us to force.
Right.
I mean, as far as, are they mixing it in the back room? Where are they mixing it at?
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of questions that go into that.
Anytime anybody's being their own little chemist, you're going to have issues.
And I think we're all in consensus, we appreciate what's trying to be done here, but it's, what is, what are we really capable of doing that's fair and equitable to everybody? And I think that's where these questions arise. I mean, alcohol is the same, I know they have bubblegum and different flavors as well. How do we target that industry and not target the other? Well, probably can't by law, but again, where is the fair and equitable part of...
Well, I mean, you can go into sugary drinks that way. I mean, there's a majority of things that are targeted towards kids, but adults still consume them. So I'm very torn on this, just because I understand there is a great need to curtail this with the youth in our, just not only in our community, every community. But at the same time, there's a lot of questions within this ordinance.
I agree, and it's really becoming an epidemic across our nation, and Dickinson is no exception. The youth that we see in our high schools and our middle school even, it is a great concern for our community. We just make sure that moving forward, we do it appropriately so it is enforceable, and we take the appropriate action. It really comes down to a policy decision of the city and the direction that the city commissioner would like us to pursue.
I just, even if we ban the flavors or the mixing, I mean, minors are still going to get their hands on it. It's the point of sale, how do we stop that portion of it?
Correct.
I mean, it's just, I mean...
What is the, what's the current offense for purchasing for...
For...
$100 and small...
A hundred dollars in smoking cessation.
Adult purchasing?
Oh, you mean contributing to a minor.
It would be, I believe it's a B misdemeanor.
It's a fine of 100 for the first offense, second offense within two years, 250, third five.
Maybe that's something we need, I don't know if there's limitations.
And that, that's for contributing to a minor? If you bought it and gave it to a minor, it's only a hundred dollars?
That's for procuring, it's under Section 6 of your ordinance, so that, that part was not changed at all.
And to me, that is, that's where we really need to target. I mean, they're getting on, they're getting their hands on these products one way or another.
I, I agree with, I agree with everything you're saying. And, and like I said, I would go along with approving this first reading of this ordinance. That kind of gives it a quasi-working, living ordinance, but now they can come back and amend whatever and make all the changes. At least it's a start, something that they can add to, take away, that type of thing. Because we aren't gonna approve it until everyone's happy.
Look at how long the trailer park one took.
Yeah.
I mean, it took.
And, and we, we approved that, and then they amended it and so on, and so on.
But we do need to work on this, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll just offer that right now, because of the inconsistencies between Article 21 and Article 25 for the same offense, you do have a significant enforcement issue right now. So until it's modified in some way to at least make those sections consistent, it's gonna be really, really hard to.
And Mr. President, I would make that motion to approve the reading of the first ordinance with the intention that there's gonna be various changes to this ordinance between now and the second final passage.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of 1677.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Here I might just offer, hearing what the commission has said, and the police chief will help me, I think what we would do is, is get together, notify the license holders and have some focus groups, much like we did with the, the, the mobile home ordinance. Because I will tell you that this was lobbied for, for a legitimate reason. We had some concerns, and we would like to share those and bring back something with you. So we will commit to doing that if, if this is approved.
And this doesn't have to come back, you know, next meeting.
Yeah, and it probably, in this case, it won't. We'll want to spend some, some time with it.
So we have a motion to approve the first reading of 1677 with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
No.
Mrs. Trustum?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I would also encourage some commissioners to be in those conversations as well, similar to how we did the.
Trailer park?
Yeah, mobile home.
Mobile home, yeah. I think we can, and then we, we really need to clean, clean up the, the fines and the offenses so that we're consistent.
To me, it made sense to bring it back in a package after discussion, since we're having to amend other parts of the ordinances as well, which is why I voted no, because it's just a lot of discrepancies between our, our ordinance.
That's why they get two readings. So.
You, you can appoint now, if you would like, the commissioners who will participate, if you're in time.
Anyone want to be part of this?
I nominate Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take part two. You okay with that, Commissioner Frederick? All right, so we'll be part of it. All right, next item up is, we have a presentation from Elder Care, who has been waiting patiently.
Good afternoon, President and Commissioners and the community of Dickinson. My name's Colleen Radikowski, I'm the Executive Director over at Elder Care and Public Transit. And here with me today is also our Assistant Executive Director, Aaron Humphrey. And first of all, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Public Transit, and this is my yearly report with our contract to give you an update on last year, on 2018. Public transit, let's see here, Public Transit is essential for our community of Dickinson and the well-being of our riders. You know, it's crucial to our elderly, disabled, our socio-economically challenged, it's important to the rider for cost and convenience, and it contributes, of course, to our economic vitality. Public Transit is open daily, every day of the year. We have some early closers, closings on holidays, and we also do weekly runs to Bismarck and other out-of-town rides as needed when we have a vehicle and driver available. So why do we need Public Transit? We are the only transit in Dickinson that offers Medicaid rides for client, for the community, as well as Sanford Health Plant clients. We also are the only provider with the wheelchair accessibility to help those who are disabled and elderly. We reduce traffic, alleviate parking demands, and also we keep our members of our community independent by getting them where they need to go and increase their quality of life.
Ms. Radikowski, can you go back to that on the screen?
Yep.
Quick question here, Public Transit owner provider who accepts North Dakota Medicaid, how does an elderly person like in the nursing home that may need to go to the dentist or somewhere, how do they get Medicaid? Do they gotta pay first and then get reimbursed Medicaid, or?
No. What happens if, if we have clients, when they're on Medicaid, they have an ID, we give that ride, and it has to be to doc, from home to doctor only, and doctor back home? And then we submit those reimbursements monthly to the state to get reimbursed, and.
So dentist, doctor, hearing aids, specialist, whatever.
Medically approved. And if they have to, if they need to go to Bismarck, it has to be to a specialist that's not in Dickinson, to specialized specialist, heart, the heart doctor, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. These are the trips that we take. You know, we get people to work, medical, shopping, social events, and more. And this is our interest, our income, we're gonna talk about income expenses next. And our biggest income coming in is the local match at 45%. And then we have our agency income being our second. And here's a little detail from last year, we pulled in a little over a million dollars in 2018. And then, just so you know, like, local match is where you see the city's contributions to Public Transit and Elder Care, 150,000, about a little, almost 19,000 went to Public Transit. The brunt of that went for the meals for the seniors. My report to you today is a requirement for Public Transit, but you also know we operate Elder Care Meals, and that's where we provide meals to seniors 60 and older. And we do that in southwest North Dakota, we have 22 meal sites in southwest North Dakota. We did shut down five of them this past Friday, and I will talk a little bit more about our main kitchen here in Dickinson and the staff challenges we face. And then we have that, the city subsidy for, for Public Transit as well here. When you look at the agency income, that's where you're gonna find the DOT reimbursements and reimbursements from state. Our senior meal levy is in the local match area. So it's just a little bit of background, because I know you work with a lot of those, those funding sources. Our expenses, we're a little, we're over a million as well, with a net income last year about 8,000. I'd like to talk next about our one-way trips. These are the trips that we do, and the top four, I have to say, there's a big change this year, haven't seen this yet in my history of 12 years. This past year, public buildings went into the top four. And you see that on the bottom, 8% went, and before social, trips for social needs was in that top fourth spot. I think that's really interesting to see, because since the oil boom, we used to have medical rides as number one, we've had work rides as number one since, since probably about 2012. I did have social in here instead of the public buildings as the fourth, but you're gonna see, we put work first, work is our number one rides, medical and shopping, and this is the past three years of trips. And then I have to do another comparison here to the elderly and disabled trips, as well as general public wheelchair. KDU is Kidney Dialysis. We take a lot of people from their homes and the nursing homes to KDU weekly. And here you see that second, I don't know if this thing lights, but the second graph there, general public had a significant increase this past year. Total trips and passengers, those are what we look at in transit, in the transit world. A trip can have two passengers, I usually like to look at that passenger count, because it's the total passengers we've helped, and we helped over about, about 38,000 last year. And the biggest change you see is that last line on the bottom, 2017 to 18, and we had an increase here of 19% in trips and 17, a little over 17% in passengers. So we've had a really good year this past year. A lot of that has to do with the Nelson Nygaard study a couple of years back, back in 2000, end of 17, we had finished that study, and in December of 17, we had changed our fare structure and our hours of operation, and we put more drivers during the daytime with our hour changes to handle the, to handle the busy times of day. And that's where we see those increase in rides this past year. I like this chart, because this chart is, since I became director, I, I just like to see the curve of the oil boom, where you, you get it about in 2011 there, the height, and then how, right now, when you see from, you know, we're starting to work our way back up again, a little bit more, with some of the changes we've been making. This is total passengers, and I gave this out to you in advance, I'm with Rita last week. It's kind of neat to see significant things that have occurred with Public Transit since, since 2008. And the most recent one is that last column I just mentioned about, we lowered our fares, changed our hours, changed driver shift peak, or shifts to the peak times of day. This is an interesting chart, it's the first one I've seen where I usually highlight the vehicles that have met their age, a van, we have vans and buses. The vans are four years or 100,000 miles, and buses are five years for their lifetime or 150,000 miles. I highlight the vehicles that have not met their life, the rest have. So we have a very aging fleet. The good news, the good news is, we take very good care of our vehicles, and they operate a lot longer than I think most people because of our maintenance and repair and keeping up with oil changes. We have 12 vehicles right now. I do have four contracts open with the state of North Dakota from grants I've written. We'll be bringing in four more vehicles in the next two years, two of them I plan to bring on this year, because we're going to start to, hoping to bring those shopping shuttles to the community of Dickinson at the end of the summer or early fall. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the challenges and, and, you know, successes and goals of both Public Transit and Elder Care. Our biggest challenge continues, hiring and retaining qualified staff. We have 48 total staff at Elder Care and Public Transit, 18 are with Transit, we have 13 full-time, and the rest of the 24 employees are through the Elder Care Meal Program. Most of those are all part-time, part-time through Elder Care. Traffic congestion, you know, it was picking up in 18, it continues through 19. The deteriorating road conditions, I've talked to the city as well, I mean, you guys are familiar what's going on with the roads in town. That makes it very difficult for our kidney dialysis patients, elderly people were taken in the wheelchairs, our, our, it's just, that's just what it is, it's hard for us driving as well. But you're, I know you are working on that, and we, we are, we are on those roads every day, so we're, we're aware of that as well. Successes we have, you know what, outstanding safety record, tooth the horn to the drivers and the dispatchers, we've got a great crew. And safety's number one, we train monthly with training and safety. The staff have, have high on training, customer service, and all the staff right now are CPR trained, the drivers first aid, AED certified, as well as Narcan trained. I mentioned a little bit about the study already, and then also successes, you know, we've maintained our advertising budget. We've been advertising more this past couple of years, and I'm glad that we were able to maintain doing that, so the community knows that we're here. A big success, success last year was the DTA convention is held every year in the fall, it's the Dakota Transit Association, and we had two drivers place, one was fourth place and one was seventh. They have a competition where they ride the vehicle, they take a bus and go through an obstacle course, they tie down a wheelchair, they do a written test, and are in the state of North Dakota, Randy Almer placed fourth, and Liz Olgren placed seventh. I do want you to know, this fall, September 13th to the 18th, DTA is, is gonna be in Dickinson, we're hosting it. We hosted it back in 2007, and I'm excited. We've been working with the DTA Director and the, the board to bring that conference here to Dickinson. It'll be at Grand, Grand Dakota Ramada, at Grand Dakota, and the Public Works Building. I've been meeting with Gary, we're gonna be holding that obstacle course for the drivers in the, in that competition at the Public Works parking lot, and we're really excited about showcasing southwest North Dakota and our town at this conference. Our goals, absolutely continue that commitment to safety and outstanding customer service, maintaining a competitive salary and benefits package, gain business sponsors on vehicles, we're in the process right now of putting a new logo together, we're gonna add the word Dickinson to Public Transit. We think that's gonna be a nice tie to the home of our community, that will be called Dickinson Public Transit, we'll be changing the names on the vehicles, and wanted to do that before we start those shopping shuttles that we've been talking about. The shopping shuttles, we made a presentation with Nelson Nygaard, plans are that we'll have five days a week, shopping shuttles going from two, we're splitting the town of Dickinson and gonna go up one side to get people up to Walmart and stops along the way, take the left side, take them up, and that's gonna be two days a week on each of those routes. The fifth route will be a Friday route from the Dickinson State University campus up to the Walmart area. And right now, we're just briefing that study and getting it more current, making sure, we're probably gonna make some changes, because time has passed and we have more data where people are going. So we're gonna be updating that, those shuttle runs and to get them going in the community. As I mentioned, some of our goals also will be the vehicles, and we always want to increase our ridership. And then I'd like to, we'd like to research, research a stored value card for fares, that's something that bigger cities are doing. To sustain us, we have to maintain and increase that funding. Thank you so much for the, the support of the city. Public Transit would not be here, absolutely would not be here without the funding you give us. We're very, very grateful for that, the community's grateful for that, because you and I, majority of us here can, we can go to five stops right after this if we want, to get groceries, Walmart, stop and see a friend. A lot of the people that rely on us need that transit to get around, and they have to think twice when they're going someplace. The community needs it. We really appreciate the partnership with you and the ND DOT. Of course, we want to retain our staff and always adapt to the new market needs in our community. The last slide I have here is about Elder Care, want to talk to you about what's going on there. Our challenge is, is our budget this year is actually a net loss, first time in my history. Aaron worked really hard, I think we, we really, worked really hard to try to get it to a positive, but we just couldn't. We're struggling with maintenance, staff salaries, raw foods, some of our towns, we're not feeding a lot of people, but we're still feeding them, because if we're feeding one or two elderly, that's making a difference. Somebody that's homebound, that meal makes a difference. But we, but we have been struggling with the high costs for the Elder Care meals. Keeping those meal sites open has been a struggle for years. Last Friday, I'm sad to say, that we had to close the kitchen at Valar Terras. Just back in December, our cook unexpectedly passed away, and the current staff that we had were able to keep the kitchen going for six months. But because of needs and changes with the employees, we just, we're not getting applications, and it's hard to find a cook, a lot of people today are not cooking meals, they're doing more prepackaged and prepared. But anyways, what we're doing right now is we're offering mom's meals, it's a refrigerator meal, to the homebound. And we have a Cafe 60 site, which is a restaurant voucher program that we have at Hawks Point, Edgewood Hawks Point. So currently what I'm doing is I've been negotiating for a couple of months now, trying to find somebody to subcontract meals. That's where we need to go, because it's cheaper for us to purchase that meal from somebody already doing meals than us. It's gonna give the seniors choices a little bit more, it's gonna also, Cafe 60, they can. It's going to also, Cafe 60, they can eat a meal anytime that restaurant's open. So I have a handful of restaurants that I'm working with, hoping I can partner with to give some more options for the people who eat at the meal site. And then the homebound people, I'm, we're going to, we're negotiating and working right now with a vendor that if it comes through, it's going to be wonderful. So while hard this was for me in my career to have to shut that kitchen down, the good news is it allowed me to put my feet to the ground and start running forward more with everybody. Before people, it's just slow going, but now it's like it's critical. The kitchen's closed, let's go. We got to get a partner going. So I'm confident, we've got a great team at the office, that we're going to get this up and running again in a couple of months in a different, in a different picture. So. Cost of raw foods are high, I think everybody knows that. Regulations make it difficult for us as well to keep the meal sites open. We have a lot of hoops to jump through to bring that meal to people. And we just mentioned about the first bullet, last year, 2018, 59,000 meals we provided, 30,000 congregate to over, about over 700 seniors and 28,000, over 28,000 home-delivered meals to 228 seniors. So we're making a difference. And our goal with elder care is to help, to help the elderly remain in their home as long as possible before they have to go assisted living or a nursing home. The high cost of that nursing home is really tough. And a lot of people use all their money down and end up on Medicaid, and then that straps our government. So our goal is to help, help, help the seniors to live independent. Our goal is always to keep securing funding, keeping the meal sites open, staff, improving menus, and then adding elder care website. And with that, I can entertain any questions that the commissioners or anybody has.
Thank you, Mrs. Rothko. Thank you. Any questions? Comments for Mrs. Rothko? Doing an excellent job.
Thank you. And we appreciate the partnership again. Thanks so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back into our agenda. We have a report from Utilities Manager Stack.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. And this particular presentation will be on the wastewater collection division, the 2018 annual report. Just a full, just a quick system description of what we have here in town. We have about 440,000 feet of sewer main and trunk lines that we operate and maintain. Both force mains and gravity lines are included in this inventory. We have 21 lift stations where we convey our wastewater all over through town and eventually out to the water reclamation facility. And our various connections include residential, commercial, and industrial customers. System facts for last year, we transported about 820 million gallons of wastewater to the water reclamation facility. We are currently using bioxide, that was a contract that was approved earlier this year, to control hydrogen sulfide and also optimize it. And then the emphasis is put on maintenance of sewer assets through a computer maintenance software, which we implemented back in 2016. We continue to add to it even as we speak on a continuous basis. That's a lot of, a lot of data to put into the system. And we're continually, not only updating the asset itself, new assets that come online, but also the maintenance as it occurs. Our outlook for 2019, a couple, we have one major improvement that we have is the installation of a septic receiving station. We, it'll improve our monitoring and accountability for the septic haulers that we have here in town. Right now, or right now it is on an honor system. I've talked with the state basically for about the last year to come up with a manifest system where we are able to keep track of who generates the septic as well as who is delivering it with respect to the various septic haulers. Also included as a new, is the purchase of a new camera van. Also the improved maintenance of our sewer system through the tracking software, both OpWorks, also our chief wastewater operator is working with the GIS department and working with them to also track cleaning. And then, of course, the asset management that we use with OpWorks, not only, or more effectively, I guess, is used in the vertical assets, lift stations and the such buildings. We go over to the GIS to maintain and track our horizontal assets or pipes that are in the system. And that is my report for 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Any questions for Mr. Stack on the wastewater report? You're doing a great job.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. You have any issues of city concern that are not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concern.
Hello, President and Commissioners. I am here in regarding to a problem house in the neighborhood.
Your name?
Oh, sorry, Nicole Wald. I have lived in the city four years. It's been a problem since I lived here. I live right direct, direct neighbor to this house. I also have another neighbor who has wrote something and couldn't be here because of work that I will read. There was another neighbor who, kind of, the city took him to court back in 2013. She will gladly write another report, she couldn't make it because of work. So back in September of 2013 is when my neighbor, Justin Ducart, at 243 Second Street Southwest, went to court with the city for sanitation of property. When you open the document on the government report, it states property in compliance within 30 days. We don't believe that he's ever come in compliance. I've talked to the city numerous times, Terry, about concerns. I've lived there four years, like I've said. I have yet to see the neighbor work at his own property. I've seen somebody else who was living there in the past do the siding. When I moved in, there was, what do you want to say, Tyvek paper on the outside, a bunch of junk all around, you name it. Then the guy who was supposedly living there sided it. And then when he went to court, the property was deemed unlivable by the city. I've been told that it's supposedly one of the five houses in Dickinson on the condemned list. And I was also told that when he went to court in 2013, that the judge ruled that people could be there from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM to be working on the house. Like I've said, I have yet to see him working on his house. Everybody else, or whatever, you know, whoever's there, coming there, whatever. Numerous warrants, drug issues in the past, the list goes on. Right now, I can tell you that there are six bikes, one and a half hot tubs, propane tanks, 14 to be exact, seven grills, a car that's been parked there for two years, hasn't moved, is full of junk, a boat that is sitting on like a jack lift. It's never moved, never been on a trailer, just been moved around the property. The house was foreclosed in 2014, probably was paid back, it's been in foreclosure at least three times now. When we talked to the city, they tell us that they knew it was in foreclosure, so they kind of weren't doing anything with the matter. Two or three times, there's been a preservation company sent there from the bank. I've had to talk to these people a couple of times. They come around the property wanting to know if anybody's at the property, what I know about the property. I only give the information that I know as a neighbor and ask the guy, you know, well, before I tell anything about this property, I'd like to know who you are because honestly, there's been numerous people over there on warrants, whatnot, so how do you know who's there legally, who's not? And now there is a trailer there that has a flat tire and it's been there for months. I can't even tell you if it's Justin Ducart's. The hot tub, when I first moved in, had a cover on it, was not secured down, blew over, hit my kid's shampaline, almost broke a window. We didn't go over there, you never know if people are there, who's there. Me and another neighbor just put it on the other side of the fence. Then the next day, this guy who had been living in the house was outside moving the cover and I told him nicely, you know, the cover's there because it blew in my yard. And then it just opened a whole nother ball of worms, ah, I was being rude, yada, yada, the list goes on. And the day before that, we had had an individual pull in the alley. So we have both, what do you want to call it, I don't know, two lots all the way to the back of the alley, an unattached garage where you can drive in and there's a parking spot in our property, fenced property, pulled in there, parked in our yard, went over to Justin Ducart's. Called the cop. Justin Ducart comes out of his property. My husband's at the end of the property and I'm on my deck, and he comes out and I said, "Justin, do you have somebody in your property that's over here, parked over here that's in there?" "Oh, no, I don't have anybody in here." I said, "Oh." I said, "Are they parked?" Or I said, "They're not parked on the street, they're parked in my backyard." "Oh, I have someone in here, let me ask them." Sure enough, two people come out. That's the day before this hot tub thing happened. And so when the guy got mad at me because I thought I was being rude when I was just telling him, I put the pot tub cover back over there because it blew in my yard, I proceeded to tell him, "I'm sorry, I had someone park in my yard last night and go next door and you think I'm being rude?"
Okay, Mrs. Wald. Who specifically have you spoken with at the city?
Terry.
Terry.
Is it, I don't know, the coding guy? I don't know if it's Stuffis, or how do you say the last name? And then I don't know, is there another Terry? There might have been, I've talked to a couple of people. And then they tell us, last time we talked to them, was that it's kind of out of their hands and in the attorney's hands, however the foreclosure goes. And then we've called the attorney, but we never get any answers back. I don't know, I did just call last Monday. I don't know if it's still, if you work with Macoff and Keller, but I left a, I left a message.
About the wrong attorney.
Yeah, and that's what someone gave us. So we're not getting anywhere, but.
It's the prosecution.
It's the, it's the city prosecutor.
Actually, just a little quick update. This is, we had a meeting last Tuesday, and this is a quarterly meeting that the city attorney, the prosecutor, the police department, codes enforcement, the fire department, we're all in on, really to target things that had fallen through the cracks. We spent a lot of time talking about this and are kind of starting over, so to speak, just because we need to. It's been kind of fallen through the cracks, but.
In general or with this house?
With this house, this specific house.
Well, my question is, it's five years, it seems like.
Mm-hmm. Oh, more than five, because I will have lived there.
How does something fall through the cracks for five?
That was exactly our question.
Yep, that's what I'd like to know and that's what the rest of us, that's why we're here.
So we are back on that and we're going to pay attention to it. We were, I was really surprised, but of course I'd never seen it, but I was really surprised by it. And we are going to approach this rather quickly and.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Wald, for bringing this to our attention. None of, I don't know if any other commissioner is aware of this, but thank you for bringing it, and we will remedy this.
Okay, can I give you the letter from the other neighbor or read it?
You can give it to Mrs. Murtha.
What street is that?
He lives on the corner of 243 Second Street Southwest, and I'm on Third Avenue Southwest. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, we will take care of this.
Has this been in front of the court?
Oh, yes. So again, Commissioners, like, my familiarity with the property is from these code enforcement meetings, and it was discussed at, as Mr. Goff stated, at our last, at our last meeting. Between that one and the meeting before, it had been brought up by building department as one of the problem, a property that had a lot of problems on it. Then how can we approach it? And so as of right now, the building official, Mr. Schwint, and Ms. Winko are working together to make sure that they have all the up-to-date information because a lot of the inspections that the building department did were several years ago. They need to, they need to look at the property again, bring them forward, and then Ms. Winko will be reviewing them.
Well, I hope we can expedite this if this has been going on for this amount of time.
Is there something that we need to look at in our ordinances? Put some more teeth into this?
I don't, I don't know that you need to, I mean, it's always helpful to enhance your ordinances, but I don't believe it's been an ordinance issue. I believe it's been a legal process issue.
Mrs. Zeroff, this isn't the property that I had you go to two weeks ago, is it?
Do you remember the, did you go to the other property that I mentioned?
You wrote it, the address down. Almost, almost sounds like the same address. Okay. All right. Good, good. Yeah. Right.
Well, we need to look at, to what Mr. Frederick said, we need to look at if we need to, you know, put some teeth to these ordinances because nobody should have to live like that. Regardless of what neighborhood you live in, there shouldn't just be total disrespect for your neighbors in, or a lack of concern about what you're doing to their property values, just because you don't want to take care of yours.
We've had issues in the past. I mean, I remember a house up on Maryland Way that.
Right. Oh, I know which one you're talking about. But thank you again, Mrs. Wald. Anyone else from the public have any concerns not on the agenda? Any concerns, please come forward. Seeing no concerns, close the public issues of city concern down. And Commissioners, any items that were not on the agenda that you wish to speak to?
Mr. President, just one, I was asking today about the status of the downtown theater. Did we change a zone on that when we issued, when we sold that? Was there a zoning change on that?
I believe so.
Yes, I believe there was.
There was?
Yes.
And most of the times in our contracts, we say that if there isn't any construction done or a certain amount of work done with a certain amount of time, it reverts back to the original zone. Do we, question number one is, have we been advised what's going on over there?
We have been in contact with them. Mrs. Murtha maybe can provide you with an update.
Yes, our, our understanding, well, with regards to the timing issue, the agreement, development agreement and the purchase agreement between the parties would indicate that they had 18 months from the time that the property closed, which was October of 2018, to initiate construction before the city's right of repurchase would kick in. As far as the zoning change, I think I'd have to defer that to Mr. Hadley because I don't, I'm not recalling it. But I also, and I'll, I'll pass this off to Mr. Goff, who I know has been in, been speaking with Mr. Siev from Odyssey.
Yes, actually last, just last Thursday, I believe, I talked to both him and his attorney because it's one of those things, I bet none of us at this table doesn't get asked about it every day, about is that really going to happen? We were a little concerned, we were kind of hearing from the contractor that there were some issues. I reached out to them. We believe all of the, there were issues. Everything's been resolved, nothing was, was on the city end of it. We had done a few things to kind of help them along the way in the last few months. But it appears everything's in, in order now, or at least they felt that way last Thursday morning. Their anticipation is construction will start in the month of July, maybe early August, get the grading done, the groundwork, the foundation, and potentially take a break for the winter. They're not real excited about doing winter construction and then finishing everything in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Seeing there's nothing else that the commission wishes to speak about, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Summon.
Second.
We are adjourned.